From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, December 14th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Mike Maggard. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, please stay standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free, sovereign, and just nation, founded on liberty, justice, and liberty of all men and women. The Constitution of America, which is the foundation of our society, is the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy. It is the foundation of our liberty, the foundation of our justice, the foundation of our democracy.
Supervisor Perez.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, December 14th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Mike Maggard. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, please stay standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Next, I would like to call on Nick Cohen, Director of Kern County Animal Services Department, to introduce our Pet of the Week.
Good morning.
Morning, Nick. How's it going today?
It's going well.
Good deal. Who'd you bring down today?
I have brought with me Libby.
Libby?
Libby is about a three to four-month-old little Chihuahua mix. She's shivering and shaking, but she's got a lot of energy and she's very active. But she's, like I said, about three, four-month-old Chihuahua puppy. Her mom's actually at the shelter, and they're both going to be available for Adoption Thursday, but she's just full of love, and she's just the cutest dog in the whole entire world.
Yeah, she is. And I don't think she'll have any trouble finding a new home.
I don't think so.
Well, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we'll consider the consent agenda. All items listed with the CA above the items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first. It may be approved by one motion. If members of the public wish to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. Members of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. Members of the public may also comment on any closed-session items. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers, and that is items one, three, four, five, and eight on page two, items nine through 15 on page three, sixteen through nineteen, as well as twenty-one and twenty-two on page four, items twenty-three through twenty-nine on page five, thirty through thirty-six on page six, and lastly, items thirty-seven through forty on page seven. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any members of the board that would like an item removed for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion on consent.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
The board will now hear item number two proclaiming January 2022 as National Eligibility Workers Month in Kern County. Is there a motion on?
I'll move the approval.
Staff's recommendation. Thank you. Is there a second?
Thank you. The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have Deanna Murphy with me here, our Director of DHS, and I'll be presenting this to you. Kern's eligibility professionals are dedicated to administering benefits that support the mission of ensuring individuals and families in Kern County are safe and healthy. Currently, eligibility professionals determine and maintain eligibility for over 90,000 CalWorks, CalFresh, and General Assistance cases with benefit issuance of more than $600 million annually. Additionally, these workers play a crucial role in establishing and maintaining 186,000 Medi-Cal cases. The provision of all these benefits ensures that children, foster youth, individuals, and families have housing, utilities, clothing, food, and medical care. Kern County eligibility professionals provide accurate and timely CalFresh benefits, as evidenced by the financial error rate of 0.65%. They also excel in efficiently processing CalFresh applications, as demonstrated by their current 30-day application processing timeliness rate of 98%. And so, it is my honor to present this on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. This proclamation, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed January 2022 as National Eligibility Workers Recognition Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into our official board minutes and signed by our Chairman, Philip Peters. And Deanna, if you share with us a little bit more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for recognizing National Eligibility Day Workers Recognition Month. And although this is nationally recognized for only one week, the Department of Human Services will be celebrating eligibility staff the entire month of January. Standing beside me is Cindy Yuths and Adriana Kessler. Cindy Yuths is our Chief Deputy Director. Adriana Kessler is the Assistant Director over Employment and Financial Services, so the entire eligibility branch of the department. Additionally, eligibility professionals in the audience, if I could ask you to please stand today to be recognized. There's a small group here today, Smaller With The Rain, and they are so appreciated. All eligibility professionals here today are representing our office, including our main office, our district offices, call centers, processing teams, all throughout Kern County. So, they show up each and every day. They provide services to less fortunate. I wanted to share a little story with you briefly. I received a note from one of our employees about 10 months ago, and she said that she had come into the department as a young child, I would imagine somewhere between the age of five and eight, and she was with her mother, and they were very frightened. They were in despair, looking for food and looking for housing. And her mother didn't speak any English, and the child was interfacing and translating for the mom. And she said she was just really terrified, just terrified. And when the worker met with them, they were gentle, they were compassionate, they were professional. They got them the services they need. She knew she was going to get food. She knew she was going to have a place to sleep. And she said she thought that was such an honorable way to work, and she thought, as she was going through school, she wanted to be able to give back and go to work for Human Services. She's one of our little unsung heroes at Department of Human Services as a Human Services Eligibility Technician. But she said it needed for her to come full circle, to be able to care for others in the way that she had been cared for. So, we appreciate those who do so with a smile every day in providing services to our vulnerable population, those who are in need and lack housing, food, critical medical care, et cetera. Just a few statistics to highlight for you. And this speaks to the work ethic of the individuals. 160,000 applications for benefits. That's an increase of 160,000. As of August 2021, we're servicing 542,902 individuals/families in Kern County, 43% of the county. As of August 2021, ongoing cases have increased 21.8% from the previous April 2020. During the same time period, we've had a decrease in our staffing of almost 8% in our eligibility professionals. And so, when you see the increase in state cases and the reduction in folks' staffing, it really speaks to how hard these folks are working. I really think this is a calling, not a job for a paycheck. And that's always represented in the way the individuals work and the magnitude that they take on. With DHS in the homeless area, DHS has received 2,116 homeless applications this year alone. And in October alone, we spent $141,691 to provide homeless assistance. This is actually down during COVID. We're running more at about 3,500 applications, but that's an incredible preventative service for the homeless. We also contract and partner through eligibility with the Bakersfield Homeless Center. We served in 2021, 892 individuals, 521, those are families. 521 of those families were able to sustain housing. That's 521 families not out on the street as part of the homeless. We also do contract, partner with FLED and GBLA to provide housing and disability services. So, I want to commend each and every one of our eligibility staff and thank them for their services. We will be recognizing them on weekly events with supervisors handing out themed treats. And New has donated between $800 and $1,000 for gift cards for the staff as well. So, I thank you for this proclamation to recognize the hard work of our eligibility staff and the professionalism that they have every single day in accomplishing their task, truly from their heart, as I said, a calling. Thank you so much, Supervisor.
Thank you. The board will now consider item number six, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask questions for clarification, make referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Is there anyone that would like to speak on a matter not on this agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Scott Taylor. I sent a couple of emails, and as a result of those emails, I got two calls back from the Sheriff's Department from Lamont. I wished I would have gotten that kind of a response when my wife's business in Lamont was robbed at gunpoint twice, along with over a dozen other businesses that have been robbed at gunpoint. I'm here this morning to ask this board to put on the agenda a future agenda, not years from now, but soon, to have a discussion, an open discussion about law enforcement and the lack thereof in Lamont. If you talk to the Sheriff's Department, you'll see there's been lots of problems there. It's the Wild, Wild West. So, that's why I'm here. Case in point briefly. November 15th, my wife's business had the front door kicked in, burglar. 3:00 in the morning, in progress. Sheriff's Department responded in 27 minutes. As a result of that 27-minute, the burglar came into our business not once, not twice, three times. Left, came back. We have it on video. We spent thousands of dollars for security, video, et cetera. Burglar went to the sidewalk, literally looked, no police response, went back in, took more merchandise, did it again a third time, cleaned us out. We're a small business. We can't afford to pay a deputy sheriff to sit in our business 16 hours a day. So, I'm asking this board to put it on the agenda, have this discussion. Lamont is the Wild, Wild West. Supervisor Couch has done the work. I'm asking the four of you, help him, help us, help ourselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have documents. Who do I give those to?
You can leave this right here. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Good morning, Supervisors Gustavo Aguirre with Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. And my comment today is to thank the county for getting the approval of about $5.5 million for the Lamont Park. We really appreciate all the work, and especially the work that the Parks and Rec Division made, and all the engagement that they had with the community leaders. There are some community leaders here that were part of the process. And I think this is just an example of, you know, how can we bring more resources to invest in our communities. And thank you for letting us know, I think from Mr. Ryan, to letting us know, I think it was as soon as possible when you got the notice. I think for me, it's very important. I've been paid to do this work, but you know, the community leaders, they are not paid. They are advocating for their community. And letting us know, you know, as soon as you find out, I think is a respect and recognition that the residents, you know, for them, what they are doing to improve their communities is worth. So, thank you for that. There is a lot to do. And I think that means Supervisor Couch, that out of the 300,000, you'll be able to put more on the La Colonia, because you know, we are thanking you, but there is still a lot to do. But thank you for the support to the communities.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Timoteo Prado. I come from Comité Progreso de Lamont. I also want to give thanks to Ryan for letting us know about the funding for the park, Lamont Park, the $6 million. And I also want to thank Parks and Recs, who helped us in this journey. We gave comments and decisions and design ideas for the park, and we're very glad that they took every opinion that we gave them to heart, and they put it down on the blueprints.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Margie Madera. I work for the Boys and Girls Club of Lamont. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my students that were part of this project, and thank you for those opportunities. They had a wonderful time being part of that, and in reality, they feel that that's part of their future. A lot of my teens cross the park, live across the park, live in the neighborhood. In reality, that is something very exciting for them. When I gave them the announcement of what happened, they were just so excited. Some of them even cried. So, we have some kids that are so excited to see a better future for that area, and for them to be actually able to use it, and also to have the opportunity to be part of something such a wonderful project. And thank you for those who worked very hard on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Seeing none, Supervisor Perez, did you?
Thank you, Chair, for just a moment, Gustavo, and to others. Thank you for coming here and being gracious. It's so nice, this Christmas season, to hear and see partnerships developing between the county and the public. I think Supervisor Couch has done an incredible job in securing these funds, prioritizing them, and you know, he deserves to be recognized for that. So, thank you, Supervisor Couch. That's my old stomping ground, you know, it's very personal to me, and I think you've really done a great job there. Ryan called me as soon as the news came in, and I could hear the entire county family cheering, basically taking Ryan out on their shoulders like the Rudy movie, you know, that the money had been achieved, that Kern County had come together in a way that we had really not really done before, as demonstrated here by Boys and Girls Club, and members of the community, and actual organizations, building the right capacity to bridge the gap here. This is the best of us, and I am really, really delighted to see it. And I thank you guys for your hard work, your devotion to the children of Boys and Girls Club. God bless your hands, and keep up the good work. You know, this county is really working hard and creatively to find new ways to bridge the gap and get to know the community better. I sincerely believe that. With all of our differences, you know, we're learning more and more about each other, and I believe this team is devoted to meeting these needs, and this is such an opportunity to demonstrate that. So, Ryan, hats off to you and your team, but I really appreciated your particular enthusiasm when you called me, you know, about a park in Lamont. I thought that was really telling. So, thank you. And to your team, Merry Christmas. This is righteous stuff. Thank you. And Supervisor Couch, hats off.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Couch?
I'd like to recognize some folks, but is it better to do it now and ask them to make a few comments, or do you want to wait until member statements?
I'm not sure that it really matters. Probably the better one would be under board member announcements, though.
I'll wait, because I don't know if there's any other public.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to item number seven, Board Member Announcements or Reports.
Can I jump in there?
And we'll let Supervisor Couch jump in there.
Thank you. I think I see Carl over there and Jeff. Could you guys, by the way, if you live long enough, you actually get to see some things positively play out sometimes. I recall being on the Boys and Girls Club board many years ago, when we made a decision to expand outside of the city of Bakersfield. And I think the first place we went was Fraser Park, and the second place was Lamont. So, it's nice to see the club in Lamont be as successful it has been, and it's really nice to see now this new renovation of this park, which is across the street from the Boys and Girls Club, and it will get all kinds of use. Mr. Alsop, Mr. Hill, Carl, I'm more familiar with Carl, I guess. Can you guys just give us sort of the lay of the land, a status on this, of how you got, just kick me under two. Some nice words were said about us, but these guys really did a lot of work, and they have a lot of work ahead of them as well. I just want them to, give them a chance for people to see who they are and let us know what's...
Yeah. I thank you, Supervisor Couch, members of the board. I want to invite probably Carl and Jeff up. I just want to, I appreciate the, you know, I have the benefit in my position of, you know, I'm in the paper whenever, a lot more than other people. But I got to tell you, the Rudy in this movie is not me. I didn't do anything. The people that did everything are the people on our park staff, and the people sitting here in this front row and back here, the students at the Boys and Girls Club, you know, those are the winners here, and those are the leaders that made this happen, just to let everybody know for the record. Carl?
Thanks. Good morning, Chairman Peters and members of the board. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this was a great moment for Kern County. This was a great moment for the Lamont community, and a lot of hard work went into this, you know. And talk about being excited when you heard the news. When I heard the news, you know, I got a call from the state, and I was actually picking up my daughter at the time, and my cellphone goes off, and I answer it. And whenever I get real excited news, I feel like I have to stand up and start walking around. So, I get outside of my vehicle, and I'm walking around my vehicle just listening to this news, and you know, like throwing fists in the sky, just because I'm so happy for the Lamont community. And I know it's going to change a lot of lives. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have about the process or anything like that.
Could I get you to come back at a later date and just give us five minutes on the elements of the park, next steps, and all that, just whenever it's convenient? You're in charge of the agenda, Mr. Alsop, so you figure, you decide on that.
Yeah, sometimes I think I am.
And I can give a highlight of that.
We can certainly do that, Supervisor Couch, but Mr. Brewer, I wanted to ask if there are people on your team that you wanted to recognize here. It might be a good spot.
Absolutely. I mean, we couldn't have done it without all the support from the CAO and Jeff. When this first project, when I was told, hey, you know, we're going to go after these grants, I went to the workshop and never had written a grant in my life. And I came back to Jeff and I said, I need more resources. I need more, I need everything we can get to try to get those opportunities and bring them to Kern County. And Jeff said, whatever you need. And then he asked Ryan, and we got folks from the CAO. A few of them are here. We have Amanda, Isaac Preston, Matt Howard from General Services, the entire construction services team. All these designs were done in-house, and I would match them up against any designs that are from private consultants. These are phenomenal, amazing, and this is going to be, just like I said, a huge investment in the community that needs it, and it's going to be used by so many people, and we love it. We love it.
So, you're one for one, bat in a thousand, right?
You know, there was disappointment in a previous round, but this by far is probably one of my, it's one of the greatest projects I've worked on in my professional life with a great team, and this outcome is just phenomenal.
And I know that in this process, it was required to have public meetings and get public input, but that only works if the community actually shows up. So, thank you to the community for doing that and helping Carl make that successful, helping the Carl and the group make that successful.
Absolutely. The Boys and Girls Club in Lamont was amazing. Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment with Gustavo. Committee Progreso de Lamont was really great, building healthy communities. There was a lot of folks involved with this. Bear Mountain Parks and Rec utilizing spaces, David Head Center. We had over six meetings with a lot of community input, a lot of support. So, we couldn't have done it without collaboration from the local community, and then also just across all the county departments. So, it was, people talk about collaboration a lot, but this was actually a collaborative effort, and the results are, like I said, it's going to be an amazing space. All right, thank you.
Supervisor Couch, I just wanted to thank your office and you for your leadership and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call on the Director of Kern County Public Health, Brenn Kerrigan, to share an update on the COVID-19 pandemic.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Last week, on December 9th, the FDA and CDC authorized and recommended 16- and 17-year-olds to receive a booster dose six months following their initial Pfizer vaccination series. Yesterday, California Department of Public Health implemented a travel advisory recommending travelers arriving or returning from other states or countries to test for COVID-19 within three to five days of arrival into California. Additionally, due to a 47% increase in cases and a 14% increase in COVID-related hospitalizations statewide since Thanksgiving, yesterday, the California Department of Public Health implemented a universal indoor statewide masking mandate, regardless of vaccination status, effective tomorrow. As of now, this masking mandate is slated to end on January 15th, 2022. However, a press release issued by CDPH indicates that the state will reevaluate and make further recommendations as needed to respond to the pandemic. Furthermore, the state's changes yesterday also updated the testing requirements for attending mega events. A mega event is defined as an event that gathers a crowd of 1,000 or more people in an indoor setting or 10,000 or more people in an outdoor setting. The change essentially requires proof of a negative pre-entry test one day prior to the event using an antigen or rapid test, and two days prior to the event for a PCR test. The previous requirement was an antigen or PCR test within 72 hours prior to the event. As of today, our case rate is 11.7. At my presentation to your board last week, it was 12.9. As of today, we have 121 hospitalizations and 32 ICU patients. Last week, we had 129 hospitalizations and 39 in the ICU. As of yesterday, Kern County's hospital system had 191 staffable available regular hospital beds and 28 staffable available ICU beds. Kern's ICU capacity is 14.4%, and the San Joaquin Regional ICU capacity is 13.3%. We continue to review the state's modeling on a weekly basis for planning purposes. The worst-case scenario in the state's modeling continues to suggest a significant surge in early February, peaking with 1,023 cases on February 25th and 742 hospitalizations on March 3rd. The moderate-case scenario suggests a smaller surge, peaking at 119 cases on March 4th and 114 hospitalizations on March 14th. The best-case scenario suggests a slow decrease in disease transmission, with hospitalizations bottoming out in May of 2022. As of yesterday, 987,371 doses of the COVID-19 vaccine have been administered to Kern County residents. 435,270, or 50.9% of Kern's 5 and older population, have been fully vaccinated against COVID-19. Another 56,759 people have one dose of their two-dose series, meaning 57.6% of Kern's 5 and older population is at least partially vaccinated. 75.2% of our 65 and older population are fully vaccinated, and 97,749 doses have been administered to our 5- to 17-year-old population, with 43,159, or 23.2% being fully vaccinated. Another 10,869 have received one dose of their two-dose series, meaning 29% are at least partially vaccinated. Over 95,900 doses have been identified as either an additional dose for those who are immunocompromised or a booster dose, meaning that 22% of our fully vaccinated population is boosted. According to the California Department of Public Health, unvaccinated Californians are 7.1 times more likely to get COVID-19 than fully vaccinated Californians. unvaccinated Californians are 7.1 times more likely to get COVID-19 than fully vaccinated Californians. Unvaccinated Californians are 12.5 times more likely to be hospitalized with COVID-19 than vaccinated Californians. And unvaccinated Californians are 13 times more likely to die from COVID-19 than fully vaccinated Californians. Kern's average daily case rate over the past 14 days is 14.86. Our vaccinated average daily case rate is 5.08, while our unvaccinated average daily case rate is 23.15. Over the last 14 days, 84.25% of our cases were amongst those who are unvaccinated. Since January 21st, Kern County has had 67,463 cases, with 61,448 or 91.08% being amongst those who are unvaccinated and 6,015 or 8.92% being amongst those who are fully vaccinated. 1.41% of our fully vaccinated population have tested positive for COVID-19. During the same time period, we have had 3,208 COVID-related hospitalizations. 2,951 or 91.98% were in those who are unvaccinated and 257 or 8.02% being in those who are fully vaccinated. Point 06% of our vaccinated population has been hospitalized with COVID-19. We've identified 1,228 individuals who have positive tests more than 90 days from their initial positive test. This equates to 0.76% of our residents who have had COVID-19 that have been reinfected as compared to 1.41% of our vaccinated population who has had a post-vaccination infection. There have been 150 individuals who have been reinfected with COVID-19 who were hospitalized during one or more of their COVID-19 illnesses. 60 were only hospitalized during their first infection. 64 were only hospitalized during their second infection and 26 were hospitalized during both infections. Those who were hospitalized during their second infection are following some development of natural immunity totals 90 or 0.056% of the Kern County population who has had COVID-19. For comparison, 0.06% of the vaccinated population has been hospitalized. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this concludes my update.
Thank you, Director Carrigan. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Couch?
I have some. I was told that after the first of the year, all new, an entirely different type of testing is going to be required. Do you know anything about that? That the PCR test won't be allowed anymore? This according to the CDC supposedly?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, I have not heard that.
I will get you what, if I can find it, what, what it was that said that. Basically, it said that the PCR test will no longer be valid to identify COVID. And we, we, meaning everybody, I think, would have to obtain or adopt or something, a multi-method testing. Does that ring a bell with you at all?
Supervisor Couch through the chair knows there.
Okay. The other question I want to, I asked you last time if the status, I think of the, if you go in the hospital, do they have the monoclonal antibodies? What is, what is the rule or the law now? If you go in the hospital, are you, are doctors forbidden to give hydroxychloroquine or ivermectin?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, those, both of those treatment methodologies are, do not have an emergency use authorization. So they are not recommended treatments for COVID-19. However, there are some physicians that do prescribe those treatment methodologies.
Are those, are those physicians taking a risk of some sort, you know?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, I can't speak to legally what, what their liability is for doing so, but it is not an emergency use authorized treatment for COVID-19.
Okay. I'm going to try to formulate these questions in a, in a better, maybe more coherent way. And is it, is it, Mr. Razan, I'm looking to you. If I address these questions to her in writing, am I allowed to copy the board on those? They're just questions. I'm not trying to, you know, form a consensus. I just want people to know what I'm asking her. Or should they come through you?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, you can communicate with, with Ms. Carrigan and C C, other board members, however, that would be public record.
That's okay.
Right? And my recommendation is that the board not respond to that. But if it's for notification or informational purposes.
Okay.
Then that's fine.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other reports or announcements from the board?
Okay, seeing none, I would like to acknowledge the recent passing of Mr. Kenneth W. Lifquist. Mr. Lifquist was a longtime Bakersfield resident as well as a teacher, businessman, and veteran of the Korean War. He is survived by numerous children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren, including his son, John Lifquist, who is our Kern County Assessor. And he is in the audience with us today. So I would like to ask that we adjourn today's meeting in honor of Mr. Kenneth Lifquist.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sir Supervisor Couch.
My condolences, John, for your, for your loss, first of all. I did not know that. Second of all, I don't want Mr. Taylor's comments to go unheeded. I know he was asking us to agendize something. I would at least like to have a discussion with the Sheriff's Department, which we do on many occasions. But I personally would like to have a, it doesn't have to be agendized yet. But I would, could you let them know that I would like to have a discussion specifically about Lamont, the Lamont Arvin area? He has a good point. He neglected to tell us, by the way, that the exact same person that robbed his business or his wife's business also robbed someone at gunpoint in the parking lot a few days later. And this individual's picture is all over Facebook, apparently. So I'm interested in why we're not, why there isn't a more robust investigation or whatever you want to call it.
Supervisor Couch, I think we have Under Sheriff Yaw coming down.
Thank you. I didn't see you there, Under Sheriff.
Good morning. Supervisor Couch through the chair, there has been a robust investigation. We do have a warrant for that subject's arrest. We're actively searching for that subject. We haven't been able to find him at this time. Our staffing is an issue throughout the county. This isn't something that's just in Lamont. I met with Wasco yesterday at the sheriff's request. Last week, it was with Fraser Park, Ridgecrest, all of the areas. We've worked closely with the C O's office and the board to address our staffing issues. It's not unique to just Kern County. Two weeks ago, Texas was in California actively recruiting law enforcement. Florida is coming to California to actively recruit law enforcement. In the past 12 months, we have been able to hire 46 detention deputies. We have lost 55. We've been able to hire 28 deputies. We've lost 59. We are.
Were any laterals?
We have not had any laterals. We've had some detention's laterals, but not deputies. We're working on those. With the new contracts, we're working with the C O's office and H R. We're going to do an aggressive recruitment for laterals and entry level. We've got plans to put detention's deputies back into the C R F downtown jail. Some of the court positions, some of our transportation units, so that we can push deputies more actively out to the street. We've done rescheduling throughout the entire county where all of our deputies now, metro patrol and substation areas are on 12-hour shifts and the shifts mirror one another. So if we do have a deficit in a specific area, we can move deputies throughout the county to fill those. We've got some creative ideas that will probably start to come to fruition in July. The job specs for what we're going to call a community service tech, which will be a non-sworn personnel that can go out and take some of the lower level vehicle burglaries, petty thefts and things of that nature to free up the deputies so the deputies can respond more timely to these critical incidents that occur.
That's outstanding.
So there are a lot of great things in the works. And we were working on doing some recruitment. We've got an outside agency on board to help us do our recruitment. But we wanted to wait until the final contracts were finalized so that we could push out the good things that came with those as well. And we would encourage anybody from the community to reach out to us because there are some things that Mr. Taylor wasn't aware. He wasn't aware and Chief Deputy Pluggie's out there speaking with him now. He was not aware that we did have a warrant for that subject's arrest and we are actively trying to find him. And as soon as we do, he will go to jail. We also see some of the frustrations, unfortunately, with the law changes. There's a, there's a young lady that lives out in Supervisor Peter's area that she's upset. Deputies have gone out there, arrested an individual multiple times for thefts off of her property, cited him multiple times. Unfortunately, they're petty thefts and they're misdemeanors and they're right back out in there. So we do need some help from the state, maybe putting some teeth back behind some of the laws that we used to have. But the county has been working with us and we are doing everything that we can to recruit people. And we will continue to do the same.
Thank you, Sir Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for your very thorough and user-friendly presentation on some of the challenges of public safety here that you're facing overwhelmingly. Thank you for being creative and optimistic as you move forward. It really means a lot. Thank you. Have the issues of the investigatory process of how long it takes to get through the background check been addressed through the outside consultant?
Well, some of the issues that we have with that are, one is our programs are antiquated. We do currently have, I believe it's over at purchasing, just to get the final approval to get a new system that will streamline that quite a bit to where we can pretty much go paperless and we're not going to have to have people filling it out, bringing it in. They'll be able to do it remotely. We are working at that. Some of the others is we get quite a few applicants that can immediately be disqualified just due to recent criminal behavior or things of that nature when it comes to some of our sworn positions. So we're trying to streamline those. We have reached out to multiple companies to try and get an outside agency to come in and do some of our civilian backgrounds, which would streamline it and free up for our sworn backgrounds. Unfortunately, the need for background investigators throughout the state is so overwhelming that it's just not cost-effective for them to come to Kern County because they're working in areas like Los Angeles and San Diego and those areas. But we're, we're trying to do everything we can to streamline the processes as well.
You have incredible challenges. I did not know that about the background investigators because I know that's a procedural challenge everywhere. Have we thought about it? I can't remember if I talked to you or Donnie about taking retired deputies that have, you know, that are really seasoned to come in and do on a part-time basis some of that background challenge and move, streamline some of those applications?
Supervisor Perez through the chair, we do currently have retired deputies and required Bakersfield, or retired Bakersfield police officers that are doing some of our backgrounds. We also worked with C O's office and we created an extra help position. We raised the pay for the retirees to even try to lure some of them back that we could put into the courts to be bailiffs and fill some of those other deputy spots that would allow us to move the deputies from the courtrooms out onto patrol. So far, we've had very few takers on that, but we're still actively trying to recruit.
Okay. I'd like to have this conversation with you again and just brainstorm on how it could be helpful and, or this body could be more helpful in that recruitment and investigatory process because I feel like that's a really major backlog, you know, nightmare for us, for you, actually having to deal with it. But I feel like we could tweak some things and obviously you're doing a lot of that. I'm not suggesting that you're not or that I know anything about this. I don't. I'm just saying, any way that I or this board could be helpful on those particulars that we can move quickly, you know, I think would be really meaningful. I was just having a discussion in Monterey with the governor's legislative, what does he do? In, in his legal team, very top player in the governor's legal team about this particular issue, about challenges of recruitment. I felt like they were listening, that they are aware of some of the issues. And I feel like we could move, you know, we could make some progress because it's obviously at a crisis point and it's not your fault. More, more fault is on my side of the table normally, on the politician's side than yours. So certainly we're grateful that you are staying focused and committed and remaining optimistic because I know we can fix it and I know we can do more, right? To keep the standard of our deputies high, but include more people in that process that, that could be great public servants here. So anyway, thank you for your leadership. Appreciate you.
Thank you. And we're open to any ideas. I mean, some of the best ideas that have come up have come from people that were not working within our organization, that were just creative ideas. And we're, we're willing to try. So thank you.
Thank you, Sir. Supervisor Scrivener?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Under Sheriff. Appreciate it. I want to ask the C O's office to help us with something that I think is important. The story that we heard from the gentleman from Lamont is not unfortunately too terribly different than what we hear throughout the county. I think that our constituents in all of our districts are all concerned about crime rates and staffing levels for deputies, response times, et cetera. Some of the things that you talked about, Under Sheriff, are encouraging as far as addressing what we've seen with staffing levels. And, and hopefully we are at a point where we can turn the corner with the agreement that we now have in place to make us more competitive in the market. But some of the other strategies, the technician positions to help take those reports versus tying a deputy up with it, that's a, that's an excellent strategy. And so what I'd like to ask the C O to do is to have a conversation with the Sheriff's Department and lay out for the public and for the board what these, the challenges that we've identified, the fact that this is not just statewide, but a nationwide issue, but what we're doing here in Kern to help address this. I think that that would be reassuring to the public that we are taking this seriously and we are taking steps to rectify it to the extent that we possibly can. So could you work with them, get, get something in writing to the board and then something that we can look at pushing out also to the public? And also I think that some of these things that we're talking about should be reassuring to some extent to the folks that are within your ranks. Because I know that they've been frustrated with the staffing levels. They've been frustrated with the mandatory callbacks, et cetera. And so I think that we have taken some significant steps to help address the issue. But putting that information out to the public and to our own staff, I think, is important. So could you do that, Mr. Alsop, for us? Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivener, Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it accurate that we have a policy in the county that restricts the ability to utilize retirees to come back and the term by which they can serve with us?
I don't know that it's a CASERA policy, the retirement. We are restricted. We do lose a lot of our background investigators. After two years, they can come back for two terms and then we lose them. We've actively reached out to the Bakersfield Police Department because there is some benefit with them being a purse agency and us being through CASERA. A lot of our retirees are working at the, they'll do the two terms with us and then they'll go to the Bakersfield Police Department where they can work unlimited terms. And we've hired Bakersfield, retired Bakersfield police officers that come to us after they've done their terms over there and they can continue to work with us and do our backgrounds.
Thank you. I posed the question about policy to introduce the, the issue of, should we review all of our policies to see if there are any of them that are causing us to not be able to effectively bring people back, at least until we, this issue is remedied? Are there, so I'd appreciate if staff can look at that as, and you guys can work together, the Sheriff's Department and the C O's office about this, and personnel about those hiring policies. Are there any policies from the state that are affecting our ability to retain our, our staff? For example, the COVID testing that was a requirement and whatnot that there was concern about deputies might leave over that? Are there any, any issues from the state or anybody outside of Kern County that are imposing more of their, more problems on us?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, our deputies, the only place that we were really impacted by the mandatory was in the jail. And it was specifically to those that worked in the infirmary. So they have to be either tested or vaccinated. The infirmary required that they be actually vaccinated. We did not have an issue with finding vaccinated people that wanted to work in the infirmary. There are some proposals by the state that are going to come down that is going to make it more challenging for law enforcement. The state is currently trying to propose that instead of being able to hire somebody at the age of 21, that they have to be 25. The state is also trying to impose that to get into law enforcement, you would have to have a degree. A lot of law enforcement come into law enforcement with degrees. The overwhelming majority of law enforcement continues to gain their education throughout their career and will obtain degrees throughout their career. But if the, it does pass that they have to be 25 years old and have a degree, that will make it even more challenging to get law enforcement in the future.
So I would ask our delegation to the California Counties Association that we make that issue very clear. Understanding our issues isn't helping. Imposing requirements of us only makes it harder. Imposing requirements of us only makes it harder, so I hope we can make that, make that clear to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Supervisor Perez?
Mike, thank you for bringing up that issue. It is a major issue and a disconnect with the legislature and the realities of public safety on the ground. I mean, it's pretty shocking, frankly. With that said, I had a very nice conversation with the governors, the person I was just talking to about, Jason, about this issue, and how we could be very, very proactive in our dual enrollment process of starting young people who are interested in law enforcement, because many know by the age of five, like my son, they know that law and order is something they want to devote their life to, and it's remarkable. But, it's no reason for us to wait until they're over 18 to begin the process of getting the expertise, right? The areas that, of scientific, there is so much in the world of public safety and investigation that, that we can grow expertise, and that frankly, so many people in your ranks would like to be better at and know, know more about. So, through a dual enrollment process, through our community college system, because the previous governor gave us a baccalaureate or a B A through the community college, we could ask for another, for a new B A program, which they are going to give the junior college in police science, or in criminology, or, or criminal, whatever that arena is, and enroll our young people as freshmen in high school, so that by the time they're 19, 20, they can have a full-blown B A, all paid for, local, don't have to leave home, don't have to take on all that profound debt. But, if we get oriented around a new, recruiting a new generation of law enforcement, that we will always, that we will, in addition to, you know, having the opportunity to engage in a life passion, right? You can be educated very early formally and have a 19, have a B A by 19 or 20, or certainly an A A out of high school, right, on police science, and, and entice, you know, folks in, that are interested in the public safety arena with some opportunities for education, and frankly, higher wages as a result of the education. So, I think there's a win here, because our community college has been so aggressive at helping dual enrollment. We have the largest dual enrollment state program in the state of California. We started with 30 kids out in Arvin, now we have thousands. 102 just graduated last summer with A As heading to Berkeley and UCLA. Great programs, right? Not everybody's going to go to those schools or even wants to, but if you are, we're giving them a leg up that way. And I, I think where we really have an opportunity here to, to refund our police, right, for educational costs, and for those who are interested in going back and growing in expertise, like so many of our firefighters do, that we learned about in the recent Quest for Chief, is so many different expertises in there that can be developed formally and can help justify much higher wages, which we desperately need in public safety. So, anyway, just some thoughts, but Mike, thank you for that. I had forgotten about it. I think we're really on to something there. Another reason why I want to talk with you and, and Donnie whenever you guys are available. So, thank you.
Supervisor Perez to the Chair. There's, there's actually already framework in place for that, if it's not through, accredited through the college, but the Kern High School District, that South High School and the Bakersfield Adult School have a semester-long or two-semester-long course for law enforcement, where they put them through many police academies, teach those. You can go as a junior or senior in high school. My son, who's a Bakersfield Police Officer now, he actually attended that as a junior. So, it's a great program. I would encourage all kids that want to get into law enforcement to attend one of those programs. And if it was accredited to help with the degree, that in the future will help offset some of what the governor may be imposing with the new law changes, with the degrees requirement.
In particular, the enrollment as freshmen and getting general education out of the way, I mean, so much of the high school curriculum is just not relevant anymore. It's really not doing it. It is what it is. We can close that gap, right, by joining up the parallel path of, of getting your college basic, you know, your G E's out of the way, and then at, you know, at 18, either have an A A already paid for, already come into the process with training through high school, right? I mean, we've got to start our folks much younger in the acquisition of a skill set that's competitive and consistent with their own passion. And I, I like what you're talking about, but I think we can really be really aggressive in this, and, and really lay out a framework that is enticing, that really, you know, makes it affordable and even desirable for people to, you know, flood into our public safety arena and, and be, you know, part and parcel, you know, keeping our civilization civilized.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We've been in partners with them for years. They come, they bring the class every year and do a day-long tour of the facility and all the opportunities with the Sheriff's Office, and then the sheriff and our staff go speak with them about the things that they need to do in the future, so that they're not one of those individuals that gets disqualified the day they turn in their application because they made a poor decision somewhere along the line.
Thank you so much.
Just one quick question, Under Sheriff. I know you said that there have been some, you know, people coming from Texas, Florida, recruiting law enforcement out of California. Have, what, what kind of a net are we casting here? Are we, you know, still focused on trying to hire regionally? Are we looking nationally at attracting people, or do we have any kind of program like that in place right now?
We, we're looking at expanding our recruitment to go out of state. It's, it's difficult to recruit into California. California is one of only two states, I believe Florida is the other, that only accepts a California post. So, Texas, California, most other states will accept the California post, so if you've already gone through the academy here, you can go back there and be hired on, and you don't have to go back through another academy, you just have to go through field training. It's more difficult. We were successful about a year and a half, two years ago. There's an equivalency test where we were able to get one individual whose father used to work for us. He was a Colorado, worked for an agency in Colorado. He was able to take the California equivalency test and not have to go through an academy. But, that does create another challenge, that California does not recognize other states' post certificates.
Interesting. I wasn't aware of that. No surprise that they're not trying to, or it's a lot more difficult to recruit people into California than it is out of it right now, but neither here nor there. But, thank you, Under Sheriff. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will move on to our next, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I haven't done this in two years.
Sure, Mike.
Thank you. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. In listening to this comments about developing workforce, there are a lot of things going on that you probably haven't heard about, and I wanted to bring that up to, up to, up to your attention. There was, there is a movement now, and we got Cal State together with Kern High School District. Mary Barlow was at the meeting, just about what you're saying, developing more pathways. There are a number of majors at Cal State. Nursing, they have a public safety major, accounting, teaching, and we, all of the government agencies are looking for people. And we're having these discussions about Bakersfield, quote-unquote, Kern County is going to have to come up with a system of growing their own. And we talked about getting into the junior high with these ideas about, well, gee whiz, I'd like to be a nurse. Well, you get Kern High, you get in one of the pathways, and you go to Cal State, and you can really cut your education down, like Supervisor Perez said, down to two years after high school, and you can be a registered nurse. Or, you can be, you got your degree in education, get your credential to teach, because they have a four-year program at Cal State for teachers. You get your credential in four years instead of five. But, in my conversations with other people in the city who's having a hard time finding people too, you're going to have to grow your own. And you're going to have to offer more internships for younger people to work, get, might not be in that age, but at least give them some money, give them some spending to do, and if they're in this program and they're working part-time for the county on some extra help or some of those things, and they're on, getting some scholarships and getting their funding taken care of. I know that Cal State this summer reached out to a lot of kids. We started out looking last spring at the BEST program, which is by B H S program at the Baby's Fund, and it targets black young men and getting them qualified to go to college. But, what we found out, that's where it stopped. There was no program to help them go to college, find out what they have to do, get through the paperwork. And I know Cal State reached out this summer to every one of the young men that got their, got their qualifications taken care of at Kern High, and where are you going? What are you doing? What's your finances? Fill out a FAFSA, all those things that everybody does. And I haven't gotten the numbers back yet, but there are kids that are now in some of these majors that will come back. And you talk about the fastest way to get a good job. If you become a teacher, a nurse, and, you know, you get married, and your girlfriend and both are teachers, you're living pretty good, or policeman, or, it's a good way to the middle class, but we have to address the disconnect. People don't know what's out there, and it has to start back in the elementary schools. And that's why we had Mary Barlow in at the meetings, and I know Panama's looking at it, Keith Woolridge. We're trying to figure out, well, government needs it. You have vacancies and can't find people to take the spots, so you're going to have to grow them. And we would gladly like to participate with the county. We've had a conversation with the city already on the same topic, so let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something? Mike, thank you for the role you have played in making all of this a reality. I remember we had a half a million dollars. What do we do with this money to make a real change, a transformative change that's meaningful? While, you know, I'm not an idea person. I called Mike, and Mike says, well, let's get Sonya on the phone right away, and we launched 30 kids in Arvin and said, well, let's give it a shot and see. You know, you believed, you brought the right people to the table. I mean, you're an incredible visionary, Mike. I mean, none of this would be happening really without your really key, critical center of influence role. I really mean that, and, and I'm grateful for you, and I, you know, I think we're going to continue to grow this in a way that's really good for Kern County.
In the last semester before COVID, seems like a lifetime ago, there were over 20,000 classes. Some individuals taking two, three, four classes, not students, but 20,000 class seats in the Kern High School District. High school students were taking college classes. 20,000. And five years ago, six years ago, it was, I think it started out with about 500. I know Arvin was the impetus, because they had to start in the 5th district because of the money. But, yeah, it's gone from this to this. And now, Cal State actually is teaching classes, different classes in the Cal State, in the high school district. Same thing, and it's growing, and they've got a couple thousand kids in that program. So, there's a lot of things going on, because we talk about this all the time. We have a really crisis with our workforce. So, and there are people looking for opportunities, but they don't see the path. So, we have to figure out a way to get 10, 12, 14-year-old boys in particular. It is really a crisis in education in Kern County, that, you know, you look at, you know, I don't know what the numbers are at Cal State, but I know at my old alumni, U C Davis, when I was there in 1975, it was 55% men, 45% women. U C Davis is 60% women now. More women get master's degrees in engineering than men. It's an inevitable thing that when you open the door, we can do these things, so, but there needs to be help, and maybe some of your money that you get from the federal government could be targeted to a few programs to help you grow your workforce. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Our last item is number 20, the proposed addition of 20 wildland firefighter positions and approval of a wildland firefighter bridge program in order to allow extra help seasonal firefighters to transition to full-time firefighter positions. And for a report on that, I will turn it over to our Fire Chief, Aaron Duncan.
Good morning, Chairman Peters and members of the board. I'd like to dovetail on Mr. Turnipseed's comments on growing our own employees. That is exactly why I'm here today. Today is a historic day for the Kern County Fire Department. I get the pleasure to bring you a bridge concept that has been years in the making and will finally, hopefully, see reality today. Since becoming your fire chief in July, my number one priority has been very clear, fully staffing the Kern County Fire Department, primarily a focus of hiring local residents to improve our retention. Your board has fully supported me and my staff in accomplishing this mission. In order to accomplish this goal, the department has taken a three-step approach. Step one, opening lateral firefighter applications, meaning allowing other trained career firefighters to apply with the Kern County Fire Department. Step two, conducting a comprehensive open recruitment for firefighter recruit, means allowing 18-year-olds with a driver's license to apply with the Kern County Fire Department. Chief Augusta, who's here with me today, has led our FRAP program, our firefighter recruit assistance program. You've probably seen us advertising it all over social media. We've visited every community in Kern County and talked to many local young kids, educating them on what it is to be a firefighter and how they can apply. I'm happy to report that our application just closed, and we got more firefighter applications than we've had in the last decade. Along that line, I want to thank that, that recruitment was a collaborative effort with Kern County H R, specifically with the Director of Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity, Ms. Povengill. She was key in helping us put that program together, so thank you. And finally, your board is here, finally, your board is helping me facilitate the last step of this approach by adding the position of wildland firefighter to my budget. The wildland firefighter position is a permanent position available to qualifying Kern County Fire Department seasonal employees with a minimum of three years' experience working in our wildland division. This position will create a pipeline for our wildland seasonals to become permanent and lateral over to being a firefighter, hence creating our bridge. We know our seasonal crew firefighters. They are local, physically fit, hard-working, motivated individuals. We train them, we educate them, and we know their work ethic. They, on the other hand, know our department. They understand our culture, and they fight fire here in Kern County and oftentimes throughout the state. Another recent reminder of their hard work is seen in Alta Sierra. The hazard reduction work our crews completed years before the French Fire even started saved that community. By creating this wildland firefighter position, I can streamline the hiring process, get these individuals trained to get boots on the ground up to six months faster than traditional methods. Additionally, when our local candidates see the bridge that we are creating to full-time status, our wildland seasonal crew program will be the envy of all firefighting agencies throughout the state. We will bring the best candidates to our wildland division and make our Kern County Fire Department even better than it is today. In closing, I want to thank all who collaborated in this project to bring our bridge to reality. I want to thank your board and the C A O's office for all the support that they've given us. I would like to thank the Human Resource Division, Devon Brown, Tracy Eldridge, Carrie Ferris, and Brenda Villanueva. And lastly, I want to thank Captain Patty Young, who is our superintendent of our Golden Empire Crew Program, who helped write this position. He leads by example in his training our future wildland firefighters. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the addition of 20 wildland firefighter positions, refer to Human Resource Division, and amend the department position and salary schedule. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief Duncan. I've, I've had, you know, a handful of friends that were wildland firefighters for Kern County, and I know how hard those guys work, and, you know, I was up there with you and your department during the Alta Sierra fire and saw the difference those guys made in saving the community up there in Alta Sierra, and they're absolutely critical. And to see a program like this is very exciting. I know of all the, you know, recruitment and retention issues that we've had in some different departments, and public safety, getting people to come onboard has been a challenge, but, but it's really exciting to hear that you guys have had a pretty good response in all this recruitment effort, and you're thinking outside the box and finding new ways to get people to come and, and join the team. So, my hat's off to you. This is really, really exciting stuff to see, and, you know, it's thanks to your leadership and your team, so much appreciated, and, and let me know how I can, can help with this.
Thank you.
You bet. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation and your enthusiasm for the work. It shows. I appreciate you. Perhaps I missed something. How does opening the lateral moves to outsiders grow our local workforce? Did I miss something there?
It's a, it's a three-step approach, so we did laterals, allowing other career firefighters to apply. That's one avenue, that's one pipeline. Then going out and getting our local kids through the FRAP program is another pipeline. The bridge that we're building today is based off of our seasonal crew firefighters. These are our extra help firefighters on our crews. We're, we are creating a position of wildland firefighter, which would be a permanent position, which would allow them to pass probation and then lateral over to being a firefighter.
I see. I did miss something. Not surprising. Thank you, Chief, and congrats. This sounds very, very exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Scrivener?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Chief?
So Chief, first, I have two questions. First, what is, what is this going to mean for folks that live in areas where you have the urban wildland interface? So, you know, Kern River Valley, Tehachapi, Fraser Park area, et cetera. And what is this, what is this program going to mean for those communities as far as prevention measures, response to those kinds of incidents, et cetera?
It's only going to make our program better because we're going to be bringing the best people to our crews. So it's going to mean that we're going to provide better protection to those communities.
And compare this to what we were doing as far as hiring in the past. You've talked a lot about, let's, you know, let's focus on hiring local. We do, we look, when we do lose someone going to another department, et cetera, we try to determine what were the reasons. From what I have learned over the years, we're seeing a lot of folks that came from another part of the state, were hired on here and then went back once a position opened. So we train them, you know, the expense, the time, et cetera, and then they went back. So can you speak to that and how this is going to change that? And if the CIO would like to give any input to you, because I know the CIO's office looks very closely at these exit interviews, et cetera?
Yes, so previously, we required a firefighter one and EMT certificate to even take our test, which, there's not a lot of firefighter one academies up and down the state, so you had a real bottleneck of applicants. So we were getting applicants from all throughout the state, which is a good thing, but oftentimes, well, sorry, the culture of the fire service right now in California is that everyone's hiring. Every, I've talked to every Fire Chief up and down the state. Everybody is hiring, just like law enforcement, they all need bodies. And we, when we get people from out of town who aren't local, they do want to go home and I can't blame them, I understand why they'd want to go home. So we do lose people who apply from out of town to go back to their local area.
Thank you. Mr. Alsop, do you have anything to add to that?
No, appreciate it Supervisor Scrivener. Only, only to say that we are lockstep in, behind and with the Fire Chief in everything, all of the leadership he's bringing to the department and all of the creative things that he is trying to do to improve the agency, to make it even better than it is. And it's already a great, it's a great fire department. So we're just really pleased with the relationship we've got and we're focused on making sure he's successful.
I'm just, thank you. I'm just really encouraged that we identified a, I think, a reason for why we were seeing folks leaving the department, moving back to their home communities. And so I think this program is going to go a long way for us to grow our own local firefighters and then have a lot more success in retaining them. So thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivener, Supervisor Couch.
No questions. Good job. I'll move your recommendation.
Any other questions?
Did you make a motion Supervisor Couch? Then I'll second. Thank you.
Before we do, would like to see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Perfect. Okay, having no more items to consider, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to consider items 41 through 43 under the CIO's office, as well as items 44 and 45 under the Office of County Council. Is there a motion?
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Without objection, we're adjourned in honor of Mr. Kenneth Lifquist.